Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, February 8th. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Richard, Commissioner Anton, Commissioner Fidesco.
Here.
Commissioner Chairman Pill.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Fleet.
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. We have a forum.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you standing, I'd like you to please say "I do" after I recite the oath for anyone who is going to give testimony tonight. So would you please raise your right hand? I swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Please be seated, and at this time I'd like to ask everybody to please silence your cellphones Our first order of business tonight will be the approval of the minutes of the January 11th meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Thomas and a second by Commissioner Fidesco. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill.
Yes. All right. Having no old business, we will proceed with new business, and I would like to just instruct everyone, we'll follow the order on the agenda. When your item is up, you can come up to the presentation doc. There is a sign-in sheet up there, and would you please sign in on the presentation sheet for our records? Anyone who comes up later on, we'd also ask you to please sign in. Our first item of new business is planning and zoning, item 12-003. Angela Noble of College of DuPage regarding the property located at 650 Pascunelli Drive in Westmont for the following: A, a zoning code variance request to permit off-premise sign. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Angela Noble with the College of DuPage Facilities Department. This is Carla Burkhart with Hurricane Graphics, our sign designer. And we're here tonight to ask you for a sign variance to replace our existing sign at our Westmont Regional Center. And again, I've asked Carla to join us tonight. She's our design designer and can maybe answer any specific sign questions that you have for us.
Great. Tell us a little bit about the sign.
Well, currently, I think, I'm not sure what you guys have of your proposal. The gals from the city were nice enough to put together this nice little layout. So currently, there's a monument sign or a pylon sign that is at that entrance that the College of DuPage has, and that current property is landlocked. So that sign right now is a pylon sign. It has a single pole, and it has a four-by-eight cabinet on the top. We are now going to change that and modify that sign to meet the current main campus signage at the College of DuPage because they went through a recent renovation. And we are going to bring that sign down to grade, and it's going to be a monolith-type style sign. We need to have it there because there's no other entrance there, and we don't obviously want people to be going into the adjoining properties' driveways. So it's kind of imperative that that sign... We're going to be using the existing base, but it's imperative that that sign remain there so that we can direct people into that campus. So... Do you guys have specific questions about the construction or anything?
We may shortly. We'll get to that part. Anything else that you want to tell us about that sign or anything? Any of the hardships that you need to make sure are addressed by anybody who comes up tonight looking for a variance? Make sure that we address some of the hardships and things, not only for us but for the audience at home.
Well, the most significant hardship for this is that that property's landlocked. That is the only entrance into that campus. So in order for anyone to know that that campus exists is for them to have that sign right at Pascunelli Drive so that they can make that turn in there. Otherwise, they would be driving around wondering where they're going. Recently, the college has added a building sign there, but because that sign sits back, Fifth Third Bank's building is about, I don't know, four stories tall. You can't necessarily see the building sign. So that sign is serving not just as a branding element but as a directional element to get them through, you know, through from the adjacent properties.
And staff mentioned in the write-up and attached the easement agreement that does allow this sign to be placed within the easement, which is owned by another property owner.
You can also, if you have a picture of the sign, it would be a great idea to put it up on the little overhead there. It will automatically turn on in just a few seconds, and then it will show up here, and also our folks at home can then see the sign that we're talking about, too.
Yeah. This sign, this is a construction drawing by the manufacturer, so it gives you a little more detail than possibly is necessary. But basically, this is the configuration of the sign.
And it's going to be the Westmont Regional Center?
Yes.
Very nice. Nice-looking sign. Great. Anything else at this point?
Not that I can think of.
Great. I'd like to ask, is there anyone in the audience who would like to either speak for or against this item? Please approach the presentation area. Seeing nobody, we'll close public comment. Staff, any comments that you'd like to make?
Attorney Zemanek mentioned the easement agreement that went into place in 1989 as part of the clubhouse subdivision. So this is a very unique parcel in that it is landlocked without, you know, direct access to the right-of-way. So other than that, all of the signage was in compliance in terms of square footage. The only variance is due to the location.
Great. Anything further from our attorney?
I would say normally, a request like this to allow a sign on off-premise, a sign, would be probably... Staff would dissuade that heavily, and as an attorney, we'd recommend against it. Essentially, that's why we, how we regulate billboards, et cetera. But this is, I think, a unique circumstance with the landlocked parcel.
Great. All right, commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Thomas.
Thomas, the first, the sign that's up there now is a pole sign, and now the second sign's going to be the ground. Does, what's your opinion or staff's opinion about line of sight as cars pull out? Are they going to be blocked or...?
You mean, will their visibility be blocked, either coming in or out of the entrance? No. The sign sits back about 15 feet off of that intersection.
Intersection.
Yeah. And as they pull up to make that turn left or right, they pull way out beyond that. So they won't be blocked, and the oncoming traffic going either direction as they're in that intersection, the oncoming traffic can see them pulling out as well. So they're not prohibited or they're not lost in the line of sight at all.
Will the sign be lighted?
The current sign is illuminated, and this sign will be illuminated. However, I'm going to put the image back up on the screen real quick. The only part of the sign that is illuminated is this part right here. That's the only part that's...
It's backlit?
It's internally illuminated. This is the only portion of the sign that will be illuminated, as it matches that that's on the main campus as well.
Will it be on all night long or just as long as the facility is open?
No, no. It'll be on a time clock. It'll only be on during the time that the facility is actually open. So, and that's not all of the time, and that's not every single day either, so...
And by code, I believe that the signage has to be turned off 30 minutes after close.
Yeah.
So I got...
Commissioner Van Buren?
I have no problem. I can see the need, and I have no problem.
Thank you. Commissioner Fidesco?
I like the new sign. I think it's going to be better. I use that bank out there all the time, so it's really difficult, I agree with you, to see the building in the back.
Right.
Unless you know it's there, you'll miss it.
Correct.
So it's good to have the sign there. I'm OK with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleet?
I wish you good luck with this.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, too, think it's a great idea. I like the Westmont Regional Center, and I'd just like to also state that, as several other people have, that basically with the exception of this request for the variance, all of the provisions of the zoning ordinance appear to be met. And I would agree that there's a need to have this, so I also would be a supporter of this. All right. Seeing as we have a variance request, I would like to please have a reading of the findings of fact.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The property is landlocked and contains no frontage along any roadway in order to place a sign which is visible to the public. Without this variance to allow a sign in the existing easement, the applicant could not direct students and the public to its location. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The property is landlocked and does not front upon any roadways, therefore, an off-premise sign is essential to inform students and the public of its location. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Applicant seeks to replace its existing sign at this location. The proposed sign, along with all other existing signs of the applicant, complies with the bulk requirements of the zoning ordinance. To date, there have been no complaints about this off-premise sign, and the proposed sign is consistent with existing signage in the immediate vicinity.
All commissioners agreeing with the findings of fact, please raise your hand and let the record show that we are unanimous in our agreement. Findings of fact taken care of. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning, item 12-003, for the College of DuPage for a zoning code variance request to permit an off-premise sign.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Any discussion from the commissioners? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner Fleet, I'm sorry.
Fidesco. Yes.
Oh, Fidesco.
Commissioner Fidesco.
Yeah.
Great. We are unanimous in approval, so you will have our recommendation, which will go to the village board, and either Shannon or Jill will be good enough to contact you and coordinate with you when you'll make an appearance at a Thursday night committee of the whole meeting with the village board.
OK.
Thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, planning and zoning, item 12-004. Sean Chen of Divinity Design with Culture Center of Tico in Chicago regarding the property located at 55 East 63rd Street in Westmont for the following: A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs. Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry, not quite as fast as I should be with the pen. I am Steve Watson, and I'm representing Tico tonight. And our request today is for an additional sign on the building, not a pylon sign, still underneath the square footage allotted by the building, just in the Chinese letters so that anybody from China can read and know where they're going. Really what we're asking to do. We're not exceeding allowable square footage. We're actually still half of the allowable square footage on the building. That's all we're asking for. That's our hardship, is somebody from Taiwan, from China, comes out here, tries to find the building, they can't find the building.
Thank you for addressing the hardship. Anything else?
I really think that's it.
I think the write-up also said the exist, there's an existing sign, but that sign could not accommodate the additional letters. It's kind of filled up.
Correct. It's an existing monument sign. In order to do them, it wouldn't do it where Chinese letters are rather large and bulky. It'd be so small upon that sign that you really wouldn't be able to see it driving down the road.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this? Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing. And before I go to staff, if you could, do you have a picture of this that we could also put up on the overhead? And at this time, I'll ask staff if there's any comments.
The existing ground sign that you mentioned is just 32 square feet, so in order to be legible, I'm not sure that it would be possible. The characters would be very small. The other point to mention is that if this had been a corner lot, it would have been permitted two signs by right. So there's a restriction on interior lots to only have one sign. And they are, as Mr. Watson pointed out, very well under the 188 square feet allowed. They come in at about 72 square feet total between the new, proposed, and existing.
Listen here.
Great. Thank you. Attorney Zemanek, I know you made some comments already. Anything else that you need to add? Thank you. We'll now hear from the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Fleet.
And I see on here the sign will be lit by spotlight?
Yes. It's actually frontlit. If you can see on here, it's not the best drawing, but the lights are in front, going back towards the building. No reflection out towards the street. There won't be, you know, any problem with glares out in the road or anything like that.
OK. Will it be on timers? Is your, the monument sign you have right now, is that also lit?
It's on a spotlight during the day, also pointed away from the street, and they will both be on timers shut off after hours.
No further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Fidesco?
I don't have any questions. It looks like a good sign.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
No problem.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions.
And I, too, most of what I would have asked has already been either stated or asked. I think it's a good idea, and it looks good. I think that's going to be a lovely addition to that south side area, and I hope there's a lot of activity down there, and it brings a lot of business to that southwest Mont area. That's what we're looking for, is development down there, and I hope this is one of the cornerstones for launching that. So I wish you the best of luck. As we have a variance, once again, we have a need for readings of findings of fact. Please.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The applicant serves as a foreign consul agency and requires a second sign printed in Chinese to guide Chinese-speaking guests to its facility. Applicant currently maintains one English language sign and cannot yield a reasonable return without this second sign. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The existing monument sign does not have sufficient space to accommodate the proposed Chinese lettering. Additionally, the overall size of both signs is below the bulk limitations of the zoning ordinance. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The design of the new sign will complement the existing building element, will be modestly sized, and will not adversely impact the neighborhood.
Thank you, Shannon. If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are all in agreement. It is unanimous. Finding of fact completed. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning, item 12-004, for the Divinity Design with Cultural Center of Tico for a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Any comments by the commissioners? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. Thank you. You have our recommendation. We will pass that on to the village board, and Shannon will coordinate with you to coordinate what time you will appear before the committee, the whole, on a Thursday night. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Moving right along to our next item, planning and zoning, item 12-005. Anthony Capetta of West River Funeral Home regarding the property located at 39 North Cass Avenue in Westmont for the following: A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs, and B, a zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage. Good evening, and I would also ask in your presentation to make sure you address the hardships.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Convoy, representing the West River Funeral Home. My partner, Tony, cannot be here as of yet, but I'm just here to ask for a variance for our sign, which is put on the side of our building. Reason why we are asking for this variance is numerous guests of the funeral home have come and asked. We have had hard times finding the building, driving back and forth, and as we know, when we get to the railroad tracks, it's hard to turn around if there's trains or anything else. The people that have called and said, "I do see a funeral home. Are you tuned funeral home?" As for me, and anybody that would have a business, it's bad business to have somebody referring, saying, "Is this funeral home because I can't find yours?" So we've put up signs and asking for the variance to make the signs more legible. So that's our hardship, and that's our request for variance on signage.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to either speak for or against this item? Hello?
Hello.
Could you please sign in?
Sure.
And then let us know your name and address.
Hi, my name's PJ Forster.
You need a pen?
Someone swiped it.
Thank you.
That was Steve Watson. Mr. Capetta has not been sworn in, so if he is going to speak, I'm going to have to swear you in.
I don't think spoke for us. I heard him already downstairs.
OK. Then I'd ask you to please, I'd ask you to please be seated then. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name's PJ Forster. I've been a resident of Westmont for 30 years. I live on Lincoln, North Lincoln Avenue. As a friend of Matt, I just want to say the sign on the side of the building makes the building unbelievably easier to see. Not only that, I think it makes the building look larger, and not only represents his business, but the other businesses around it really brings vision. I don't know if that's the correct word, but I'm very much for it. I drive CAS every day, and until that sign was up, I didn't know where it was, so...
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public who would like to speak either for or against this item? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask if staff has any comments they'd like to make.
OK. This, the business, when it kind of changed hands a little bit in the fall of 2010, staff did have some conversations at that time. They had come in for a permit to do awning lettering, and in order to issue that permit, there was a sign on the south wall that was nonconforming because there were more than one sign on a non-corner lot. So that sign was removed, and the awning lettering permit could be issued. So there was some cognizance about the limitations of the ordinance. However, I know that there has been a great deal of concern with visibility. These two signs did go up without the permits, and the numbers that we're looking at here, 130 total square feet are now up where 45 square foot, 45 square feet would be permitted by code. So that is a significant increase. It's about 189 percent. Those are the facts. Jill, did you have any more points to add?
No, not at this time.
Great. Thank you very much. Attorney Zemanek, any comments?
You know, we've seen similar requests along, like Ogden Avenue or South Cass in high-traffic commercial areas. I don't recall requests like this downtown. So, you know, the only concern would be the precedent.
I do recall a sign request at the time when I was on the village board, the wine shop, which has since closed. They had a sign on the side of the building as well, and it did exactly what this sign would be doing. And that did pass.
I do remember that with the grapes.
Yep.
Yep. OK. Any other comments or...
Nope.
Great. We'll now have our commissioners get a chance to speak, starting with Commissioner Thomas.
I have, I see two different things here. The south sign that was there when they came in for the awning sign, that was taken down, right?
Right.
OK. Then there was some discussion with the owners about how many signs were allowed. And it's more of a question than a statement. I wasn't there, so... Then the other signs that are up now, that when you determined that you needed these signs, you put the signs up, north and south, facing north and south, and I do agree you need them. But the way they were put up was after knowing that one sign had to come down, and to have them go back up would need a variance, you put the signs up ignoring the fact that you needed a variance for that to happen. Irregardless of whether you needed it or not, there are rules in place. And a lot of people come in here, and we give them breaks because they're not contractors or homeowners, they haven't had contact with staff, whether they should have or not. What I'm seeing here is you had contact with staff. We're told that a variance would be needed if these additional signs were to be granted, and you went ahead and did it without the variance. Again, these are not statements. These are more, I'm questioning.
OK.
Shannon?
I guess our concern or our thoughts were, upon the old building being vacated, all the signs really needed to come down, which they did. And then we applied for our variance for the awning, or I shouldn't say variance, but the permit to put up an awning. I guess I was under the conception that, when I was signing up for an awning, it had nothing to do with the other signings, just I had to take those down because they were of the old owner.
To clarify, the sign on the south wall that was up previously had to come down because we couldn't issue the permit for the awning lettering change because there was an overall nonconformity. So it either needs to be brought into compliance, or else a variance would have needed to be sought at that time.
That's all I have.
OK. Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, I would iterate what Commissioner Tom said. Fully recognize your desire and need for the signs, but I am concerned about the way in which it was done. Again, you're not some homeowner that hasn't, is not used to making presentations and appeals to the village for the requirements that you'd have. And those were ignored, and that is concerning to me. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Fidesco?
I'm pretty much in the same camp. I do know that the building, you know, first of all, you're a new business replacing the old business. You obviously were confused, or somebody was confused in your organization, about the signs as far as being able to change the names. It sounds like the staff tried to, you know, explain to your organization that the signs needed to come, that one sign needed to come down in order to get the other permit. However, this new sign went up with your name on it. I think that was, you know, gross violation of the ordinance, and although I do believe you need a sign there, I think what's up there now needs to be reconsidered. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, do we have a precedent for just on how large the signs should be on the side?
Well, downtown, the total signage can be one and a half times the width of the Cass Avenue side. So in this case, it would be 45 total square feet. So usually, it's an interior lot, and that would, you know, be the maximum you could have for the one sign. On a corner lot, that could be split between two. So 45, 20, and 25.
On a corner lot, does the dimension change also then? Do you use two angles?
You can use the wider facade.
Of the two.
No further questions. I do have a question. If this was a corner lot, for discussion's sake, and we use the other dimension, how many square feet would be allowed?
Let's see if we can find, well, the width is 150, so 225 square feet. Is that right? I'm sorry, that's the lot width. Excuse me. So let's just use 100. 150? Yeah. 150 square feet, roughly.
And what they have currently, which is in violation, is 130?
Right. 130 total.
OK. Thank you.
How long have the two signs been up there?
I'd say about two months, no, a month and a half, two months.
And are you getting some good feedback from those signs?
I have had no calls with people that cannot find my building, or confused with the building down the street from me as well.
Both good things. I travel up and down the street, and probably because I already know that you're there, I've never noticed the signs before myself. But I guess not looking for the building, I wouldn't be. They are up high, so typically with all of the other buildings on CAS, everybody's, I'm always looking eye level. So it's interesting that people would want to look up as opposed to your awning. But awnings are hard to read too, especially at night.
Well, especially, we have a tree in front of, right in front, where we asked for our sign, there is a tree directly in front of where our lettering is. So in the summertime, seven, eight months out of the year, you can't read our awning anyway.
One of the things that I think has been a nice addition has been the way you've cleaned up the building. It looks much more presentable than it ever did before. It's not even a question. It's such a night and day difference. So I appreciate that, and I think that bears a little consideration in this. It is a large variance, 189 percent is really large. I'm not sure that there's a lot you could do with either of those. Do you feel that both of those signs are necessary, both the north and the south one?
I can't tell which way traffic is, or my guests for the funeral home are going to come from the north or the south. I can't say, well, you need to turn around and come back from the north so you can see where our sign is. It's just people calling and saying, hey, I'm coming from the north, or I'm coming from the south, where are you? And I'll say, I'm 39 North CAS Avenue, one block, what, north of the tracks. And again, I get, are you to funeral home? And that's kind of a dagger to the heart to say, confusing my competitor.
And I will agree, that is an easy one to recognize because of the monument-style sign. There's really no option for you to do something like that.
No.
Out there, which would eliminate the need for all three of these signs if you could, and that's why he doesn't have to do this.
But I know we are a highly-trafficked building. It's not something where we have a store, or a building where we're conducting a business where we do not need customers or the general public to come to us. This is a highly-trafficked building. I mean, a typical visitation, I might have 80 people in the building at one time. That's 80 people that are looking for a sign or the building at any given moment.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just, yes, I think we're all in agreement that perhaps the signage is needed. Our problem has been with the manner in which it was done. I will, no doubt, vote yes on it, not reluctantly because of the way it was done, not because that you didn't need it.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas.
I, like Wally, will probably vote yes for it. But is there any thought about bringing the signs that are up there down, and make them smaller, and still be able to label your business, and get closer to what's acceptable as far as square footage? That might need to be taken up with the trustees when you go before them. I would keep it in mind.
Yeah.
Certainly, the commissions can feel free to make a separate motion and make that a recommendation for the board to consider.
All right, I have no further comments also on this. Any other comments from any other commissioners?
No.
Shannon.
I wanted to echo Commissioner Pill's sentiments. The petitioners have done an excellent job with cleaning up the property, and it's not just on the outside what we can see, you know, from the exterior. They've spent a great deal of time, energy, and money to clean up and bring that property into much better condition. And the other thing I wanted to say is that as soon as we discovered there was an issue, you know, you instantaneously did set up a time to come in and meet with us to try to work through the problem.
Great. Any other comments from commissioners or staff, or our attorney? Great. We have two variance requests here before, so we have two different findings of fact, and on the recommendation of our attorney, we're going to have those combined into one reading. Please.
Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The property maintains an awning sign pursuant to a validly issued permit. However, this sign does not provide sufficient visibility for the business to the general public. Based on the difficulty the public has had with locating the site due to lack of increased signage, the applicant cannot yield a reasonable return without this variance. Criteria number two, the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances. This request is motivated by the desire to better inform the public of its location within a crowded downtown area. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The proposed additional signs are tasteful, consistent with other signage in the downtown area, and will not adversely impact surrounding properties or pose any hazard to vehicular traffic or pedestrians.
I can just take a vote, because this applies to vote both variances.
We don't have to do the other, we'll just do that. Okay. If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in our agreement. I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item 12-005, West Suburban Funeral Home, regarding the property at 39 North CAS Avenue, for A, a zoning code variance request to increase the number of allowable signs.
So move. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes, and Chairman Pill?
Yes. Item B, I'll entertain a motion for item B, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum gross square footage of signage.
So move. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
I have a question. If you vote for increasing the signage, you know, but didn't specifically agree with the signs that are there, I can do that, correct? I'm asking you, attorney.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, basically, I feel that there should be, you know, some increase here. However, I didn't just, I did not agree with the signs, the first part, so.
You do not agree with the number of signs?
Number of signs.
But you're okay with increasing, see, I guess the problem is that this is a request to increase the gross square footage to the specific amount.
Okay, then, okay, that's what I was asking for clarification.
Certainly, you can make comments for the record, but you afterwards, as to what you think is.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Fidesco?
No.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. By a vote of four to one on both, you'll have our recommendation sent forward to the Village Board, and Shannon will coordinate with you to let you know when you'll appear before the Village Board at a committee of the whole meeting on a Thursday night. I would also give strong consideration to a Plan B with regard to the size of those signs and the amount of variance you're requesting via percentage-wise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Continuing on with planning and zoning item 12-006, Timothy Terrio, I hope I pronounced that correct, and Walter Morrissey of Lilig and Thorzness Limited, regarding the property located at 226 North CAS Avenue in Westmont, for the following. A, a special use permit request to operate a dance school in the B1 general business district. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, I'm Walter Morrissey, and this is Tim Theriot, who's the contract purchaser for the property in question.
I pronounced it like a cub.
That's right. Close enough, thank you.
We both were sworn in earlier at the beginning of the meeting after the pledge of allegiance. We filed an application. Mr. Theriot is buying the building at 226 North CAS. He would like to convert it, get a special use permit under section 703 of the ordinance to conduct a dance studio there. They would run classes in the morning, in the afternoon, in the evening. It's a two-story building, it's currently used as a mechanical, as the office for a mechanical contractor. Property is approximately 13,350 square feet. We have provided staff, we work with staff, and we have, did do the zoning search, we provided a floor plan on converting the current general office space to dance studios. It would be for young adults and for adults as well, so it would serve, it would be classes in the morning from 10 to 12, there would be classes from 3 to 10, and then on Saturday there would be classes from 9 to 6, and on Sunday would be open from 9 to 5. There is off-street parking for this facility, and there is the ability to do, pick up and drop off of the younger, non-driving participants that would be in the studio, and it provides an alternative for after-school type of activity from a fitness and aerobic standpoint. We filed an application, we have set forth the standards for the special use here, specifically under section 1309, in a letter that we attached, and I'll be happy to go through those standards if you wish, but we don't see any detriment to the property value of surrounding property owners. We think it will enhance, at least be stable. Traffic-wise, as I indicated, there's off-street parking for this facility, and it is convenient drop off and pickup, so it will not be a traffic problem or create any safety issues back and forth on CAS Avenue. We think it will be a good use and mix with the neighboring type of retail establishments that are up and down the street on North CAS Avenue, just north of the tracks. The number of students in a class would typically be anywhere from 10 to 15 students, I shouldn't say students, I'm sorry, should, there'd be 10 to 15 participants that would be in these classes in the morning and the afternoon, and then the adult classes would be in the evening. And there would be some minor sale of accessories such as dance shoes and the other things that, accessories that go along with a performing dance studio. We'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
First, we'll see, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak either for or against this item? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll start out with staff comments, please.
I just wanted to more specifically address the parking situation. There is a lot that's adjacent to the property as well as the parking that's public, that I believe was mentioned. The requirement is 3.8 spaces for the number of people that they anticipate will be in classes, and then the instructors, and I believe there are 20 on-site, so there was no practical difficulty in meeting the intention of the code. And then Jill has passed out some drawings that I believe were received more recently, so they didn't get into the packet. Did you have any comments about this?
Yes, the architect provided these just to show the before-and-after interior layout. We had asked about the retail space, and they were trying to clarify.
Shannon, the private parking, the off-street parking lot is under the same ownership as this?
There's a shared agreement, I believe, that the building on the south can use part of it, is that?
No, that's not the case. There are three lots, there's the lot the building's on, and then the vacant on each side with the parking, and that belongs to the, it's all one ownership, and there is no agreement on sharing parking.
Okay.
I do understand from the current owners, they, during the festival, allow some, they allow some type of facility in connection with the village to be on there temporarily during the Westmont days, but there is no, we're not sharing space with an adjacent property owner.
So you'll have access to 100 percent of the spaces?
Yes.
That's all.
Comments? Jill? Attorney? Okay, great. We'll begin with the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Fleet.
So as we just hinted at here, how do you look at your operations during taste of Westmont? With basically the CAS Avenue closed off, and we don't put the beer tent there, right? We put the beer tent on.
You do, the beer tent is there.
It's the beer tent.
So now it's there?
Yes, that'll continue.
You know.
There'll be no prohibition, is that what you're saying?
The intent would be to continue to honor the festival as it has in the past, but at the same time, I think the dance company people may make it an introductory space available to introduce people, to make sure they're aware that there is a dance studio there. But as far as accommodating past requests, that we expect that to continue, and they would not be in business for that period of time that the festival is taking place.
Okay. So my only question, thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco?
You mentioned a little bit of retail, but you don't have a dedicated retail space. You're not, you're not going to be open to the public to sell product, you're just going to be there to support your customers.
No, I explained to staff that it would be very limited, it would be things specific to ballet dancing and so forth.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
That you don't find in a typical store. It's not public, it's not public retail, no.
Okay, that's, yeah, because I didn't see anything on the drawing, so I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, I think it's a good use of the building. I mean, we have been in the past very proactive to try to get retail, however, understanding the economy and understanding that this could bring in additional people to the community who may use the adjoining, you know, the neighboring retailers, so, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah, we'd like to see retail, but this, first it was a police station, and then it was an engineering facility, so we haven't seen much retail yet, even though we would like to for a long time. Is this a going, already in-place business that's just been relocated?
Yes, it is.
So it's established, you are not starting from the get-go?
The dance business, and the owner of the dance studio is here with us tonight. Been in business for about 25 years in the Westmont community, so it's an established business with a great loyal troupe or collection of families that support the dance.
Okay, and where are you coming from? What community?
It's on Chicago Avenue.
Chicago, in the same, in Westmont?
In, yeah.
Oh, okay.
208 Chicago Avenue.
Okay, okay. Well, good luck to you.
Which will free that space up for retail.
Where Mio Amori used to be.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thomas, please wake up.
Yeah, that was my, that was my question. Where were you for, and hopefully you were bringing an established clientele with you, which would be hard to use your facility since you're getting this for an investment. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
I too like the idea, that's a tough-use building, and I think that while this doesn't present itself on the retail front, it will increase foot traffic, and hopefully that will, that will also help the other businesses, which are one of the goals. With that in mind, it's always nice to see new businesses in town consider joining the Chamber of Commerce. When you do get in, we have a vibrant Chamber of Commerce, and perhaps you're in it already then, since you're already in Westmont.
I've been in Westmont for 15 years.
Okay, great, good to hear that. So the relationship is one of landlord and tenant then? Is that what we're looking at here? Okay, great. I think it's also good, we have the Salt Creek Group, and then Expressions, I think is another dance studio in town, and we have several music shops, and we're getting ready to see a recording studio coming in just a half a block south of you and across the street, so some of these arts-type-related facilities might be the beginning of a cluster, and that would help promote each other. There might even be some interesting marketing possibilities down the road for something like that with all of the different music and type of dance studios that we're going to have here if all of these come to pass, so I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I like your floor plan also, it's good use of the space. All right. I have no other questions. Since we have a special use here, we have once again a request for a findings effect.
Criteria number one, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. All operations will be conducted completely indoors in an existing building. The proposed use will not generate adverse noise, light, vibrations, odor, traffic, and sufficient off-street parking is available. Criteria number two, that the special use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood. The proposed use will occupy an existing building in the central business district, will be consistent with other similar uses within this district, and will not impair property values within the neighborhood. Criteria number three, that the establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. The area surrounding the property is fully improved, and this proposed use will not impede the development or improvement of surrounding properties. Criteria number four, the adequate utilities, accessways, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities have been or are being provided. The existing building is serviced by all necessary utilities, accessways, and other facilities. Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken Criteria number five, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to maximize traffic congestion in the public streets. The property has existing means of ingress and egress, and no reasonable alternatives are available, given the build-out of this property and the surrounding area. Criteria number six, that the special use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may in each instance be modified by the village board pursuant to the recommendation of the plan commission. No variances are being sought in conjunction with this special use request, and it's expected that the applicant will adhere to the performance standards of the village. Criteria number seven, the proposed use meets the special conditions of special condition two. The proposed use will not cause appreciable traffic congestion or hazard to pedestrian safety. The property contains a parking lot with 20 spaces, and there is public parking available along Cass Avenue and a public parking lot across the street. Existing sidewalks provide safe pedestrian access to the property.
Thank you for the reading. If you agree with these findings of fact, please raise your hand. We are unanimously in agreement on the findings of fact. Findings of fact taken care of, I will entertain a motion for planning and zoning item number 12, PZ 12-006, for the property located at 226 North Cass Avenue, for A, the special use permit request to operate a dance school in the B1 general business district.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Any questions or comments on the motion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Pill?
Yes. You have our unanimous recommendation, and Shannon will go ahead and let you know and coordinate with you when you'll appear on a Thursday night before the village board at a committee of the whole, and we will send our recommendation on to them.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck. All right. Does anyone have anything else that they would like to bring up?
I wanted to make a more formal announcement, that Jill Ziegler has joined our economic development, soon to be known as Community Development Department, as our village planner. She comes to us from Glenview, and she's also an AICP certified planner. So she's been a big help about three weeks now, I think, and we're glad to have her with us.
Welcome, Jill, we're glad to have you here. Thank you for your efforts in putting our meeting packets together and helping coordinate things. I would call to everyone's attention, included in your packet was an updated staff list with phone numbers, emails, contacts. If there is anyone who has any errors, changes, or anything that they need to put, would you please get those to Shannon so that, or Jill, so that they can make the necessary corrections and get that out to us? Anything anybody else has to bring up? We'd like to wish fellow Commissioner Stan Anton a get well, a little under the weather here tonight, was not able to join us. If there's no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting's adjourned.